Good evening everyone and welcome to the full council meeting of Bexhill-on-Cape Town Council. Today is Wednesday, 25th of September. Nice to see so many members of the public. This meeting is recorded in accordance with Local Government Bodies Regulations 2014. Those not wishing to be recorded should have already notified the clerk. Please can I ask everybody, three members of the public, to turn your mobile phone off? The reason is it interferes with the radio and microphones. At the very least, if you can't find your off button, please put your phone on to airplane mode. Thank you. So, without further ado, I shall move on to the agenda, adding one public participation. Is there anybody in the public area that wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. We have one member of the public. If you could please come forward and stand in front of that microphone, state your name and you have three minutes to speak.
My name's Michael Matthews. I'm a resident of Bexhill, born and bred, and I'm very concerned about the amount of money being spent by this town council. When all the councils, like Eastbourne, are reducing their expenses and grants, this town council seems to have no money to burn, have our money to burn. Because if you carry on wasting the ratepayer's money, you will find that there will be a call for this council to be dissolved. Let's be honest, very few people are actually interested or aware of it or what it does. This is shown by the amount of councillors that got through without an election taking place. There was one in Sydney recently where there wasn't even enough people to ask for a vote to replace the councillor who resigned. That alone should make alarm bells really in your head. The Bexhill Museum, why is a town council even looking at giving a grant for this? You can't take over the toilets yet from RDC, yet have charged the residents for the cleaning etcetera of them for two years. If there isn't enough money for this to be built and maintained, why is it even being reviewed here? Who will own the asset of it? Who will have to pay for the upkeep and day-to-day use of it? How much will it cost to run and keep clean? Who will be responsible for its upkeep going forward? Eighteen hours, I cannot see how or why a grant can be considered at this time. With this grant being spent solely for the one show a year, eighteen hours put on in Bexhill, how much do they cost year on year? If as a report from Brighton University says, the business collected in nearly £250,000 extra in one year, then surely the businesses that got that extra money would like to contribute to the show, just like the businesses used to pay for the street lighting at Christmas. Peckham Accessible Play Park, yes, please consider leases, but who will take over the lease if this council is dissolved in three years' time? When the break is possible.
Thank you, Mr Matthews, that is your three minutes. Thank you. Just to clarify, does anyone else in the public area who'd like to speak? Otherwise, I will move on to Agenda Item Two. No one's raising their hand? So, Agenda Item Two, apologies for absence. I want some part of the apologies, please.
Certainly, we have several holidays tonight, so councillor Browsbury, councillor L, councillor Hunt and councillor Timpey, and councillor Lewis Haynes working.
Thank you. Is it the wish of this for council to accept those apologies? Thank you. Item Three of the agenda, to receive declarations of pecuniary, non-pecuniary interest. Do I have non-pecuniary or pecuniary interest? Councillor Winter?
Thank you Chair, I'm a member of Rother District Council and also a committee member of the Mayor's House.
Thank you. Councillor Grayson?
Rother District Council.
And councillor Byrne?
Rother District Council.
Thank you. Any other interests to declare? I'll move on to Item Four. Chair's announcement. I have one announcement to make, which is to say that the private function that's been arranged to raise funds for my chosen charity has been booked. The save the date will be coming out around Christmas time. It is the 26th of April 2025. So I'm hopefully seeing you all write that down. This is Amanda Byrne and we have an international entertainer there for the evening. Further information will be announced by the people that are organising it. So I'll move on to Item Five. Wishes to approve the minutes of the following four council meetings of the 24th of July, which is Appendix A, and the 27th of August Appendix B. I need a proposer and a seconder to accept these as true record.
Proposed?
Thank you. Proposed councillor Byrne, seconded councillor Thomas. Please bear with me while I sign these off. So, Item Six of the agenda, to note the minutes on committee meetings held since the last meeting, which are Appendix C, D and E, Engagement Communications Committee, Planning and Development Committee and the Amenities Committee. That is just for notation, to note that they have been sent out to everybody. Six B is to note current vacancies on committees, as per terms of reference. And to appoint members to the vacancies of, there are three, on Planning and Development Committee. So we're looking for members who may wish to stand on that committee. Councillor Grayson?
Thank you Chair, obviously I can't stand because I'm Chair of Rother's Planning Committee, but can I please ask people to consider this seriously? It was very useful to have the town council planning committee have an extraordinary meeting to talk about Turkey Road and for councillors to come and talk at the Inquiry. We don't know the result of this yet, but it was very noticeable that the town council had actually contributed and I would love us to say more coming up, but obviously I can't. I just want to sing its praises if people could join it.
Right, there are certain councillors here who are not on the Planning and Development Committee. Do we have any volunteers to go on to that committee?
Well, I would say that as a member of Rother District Council and as a member of the Planning Committee, I'd rather, it would be better to have a complete town council input, but if there isn't anybody, if there isn't anybody, I'm happy to go.
Any other volunteers?
Can I just point out that the planning committee meetings now take place at the end of other committee meetings? So you don't necessarily have to attend every single one of them, but if you are on one of those committee meetings that's taken place prior to a planning meeting, you're there anyway. So it might be worth...
As an example, tonight after this full council will be a planning committee.
Exactly.
So you could volunteer to be on there and just stay for the planning committee after this. So that's a very great point. Are we sending it to anyone? If not, I'll move on. Can he, as a district councillor?
You need to have a vote.
Okay. So we have councillor Byrne offered to stand on the planning committee. So we'd need a seconder for that and then a vote. We've got a seconding councillor Jacklin. So all those in favour of councillor Byrne, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Thanks.
All those against, one carried. Congratulations councillor Byrne.
Thank you.
We now just need to lobby for two more members to join the planning committee, but one is better than missing through, so thank you. So I move on to recommendations from committees, which is Item Seven. So it's a recommendation from the Amenities Committee. So under the Amenities Committee, there is a Town Accessibility Working Group, which we haven't been able to appoint members from that committee. So we're looking for volunteers, because it can go to full council, for members to set up and join the Town Accessibility Working Group. Do I have any volunteers?
Can I?
Councillor Winter?
Yeah, I'd like to volunteer.
Okay. Any other volunteers?
I just want to ask, what does that detail mean?
I'd have to answer that part because I'm not on that working group.
The terms of reference on our website, so if you have a look, it tells you all the responsibilities, which is about reviewing the accessibility in the town. Everything.
Yeah, I'll put my name down for that.
Okay.
Two.
So there are two spaces and we've got two volunteers. Do those two, councillor Crofty and councillor Winter, have a second for those? Who is seconding who?
Either.
It's either or, so yes, we've got a second. So I'll take councillor Winter's first. All those in favour of councillor Winter going to the Town Accessibility Working Group? Carried unanimously. All those in favour of councillor Crofty joining the Town Accessibility Working Group? Carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. So at this point, Item Eight, I'm going to suspend the standing orders, which is for those members of the public, that's a technical term to enable people from outside of the council to speak. Okay. I'm now going to reinstate the standing orders and move on to Item Nine of tonight's agenda, which is the Mayor's Office. I've sent out my report to everyone. So far, I'm up to over sixty appointments that between myself and councillor Sane have attended. It's been quite awe-inspiring and it amazes me the amount of volunteers that there are in this town, making this town as it is now. If we only had a few more volunteers, we could make it even better. So I would ask if you've got any residents in your ward that wish to volunteer for something, I can tell from their skills that they might have, where they can go and help. Thank you. So Item Ten is reports from councillors. To receive a report from the divisional county councillor? Oh, he's ready. Councillor Hoddle?
Thank you very much.
You can approach the microphone.
Thank you very much Chair. We'd like to talk about East Sussex budget. Tomorrow at Cabinet, there will be some announcements made, which will be going public probably by the end of the week. East Sussex have looked after the most vulnerable in our county for many years. A lot of those are adults, a lot of those are children that need special needs. And the demand, what we're having to cope with, is rising. At the same times, the costs are rising. We're not talking about inflation levels five, six, 10%. We're talking about thirty, forty, fifty percent rise in demand and exactly the same with the costs, way above inflation costs. Because of that, we are going to have to make very large savings and there will be the consultation going out, which everybody will be able to feed into. I don't think that many people will be affected, but it's important that your residents know that they can feed into this consultation, how we can provide these services. The other point is about our parking issue in Bexhill, which everybody says they can't park, they can park, the cars parked outside my house. March next year is when they start the informal consultation on the next review. If, please, pass the word around that everybody has got a parking issue. That before that date, from now onwards. If they have a something that they are concerned about, that they fill in the form online and get their request for restrictions on that list before March next year. Because when March next year starts, if it's not on the list, it won't even get considered in the system. The other point is that the disparity between what Rother charge in their car parks and what East Sussex charge on street. If you go down to the sailing club, where you have that nickel bay where the tram used to go around many years ago, you can park there on-street all day for £6.50 on the Rother section of your car park. If you go about five metres down onto the on-street, you pay £2.20 all day for East Sussex. If you aren't in an annual permit in the middle of their provision, or ever as we rode up here, you pay £600 per year. If you have a residence permit within walking distance of your car park, it's £27 a year with East Sussex. That disparity is no longer, whatever the word is, no longer fair. And there will be on October 19th, a decision made to make changes. If anybody wants the papers go out in a couple of days' time, please read them, please look at them. If you have any comments, send them to me. Now this one, the last one, is about flooding and pollution. This is a map of Bexhill and it shows all the surface water pipes. It shows you the foul water pipes and it shows you the combined sewer pipes. When it rains, they either flow off the surface down to the sea or they are piped in the culvert, it doesn't string this, and it goes out to sea. It is just rainwater and surface water, that's all it is. However, you also have a foul water system and a combined system. And what happens when it's severe rainfall? Instead of flooding and then building up, we don't want that. So what happens is it goes down the drain systems, goes into a combined sewer and it goes into a storage tank. At very, very heavy times, some of that rainwater goes out to the sea. What happens is that the Environment Agency, Southern Water, monitor those, that rising rainfall in their chambers. It then gets recorded on the Beachboy website, Southern Water, and then it gets recorded as it goes outside and as an outfall event. It is then recorded as a pollution risk. It is not a pollution incident. It is not raw sewage going into the sea. And there's been a lot of misinformation that's been going out there saying that the fifth sewage going in the sea when it hasn't. If anybody wants to go through the fog that I've had over the last four, three, four years with permissions for Southern Water and the ongoing meetings, please send them to me. I'm glad to show them the map, walk along to all the forging outfalls that we've got and explain the functionality of each one. But there is a problem. And the problem is with the marine, in my opinion. Can't prove it, but the problem is with the marine management organisation, that some of these outfalls need to be extended and refurbished and we need to get those done quickly. Otherwise, I think over the next few years, our problem could become more severe with the six undeflowed crossings through Bexhill, the flooded every time. Norans Bay, Cooten Beach, West Cork Drive, Dryangap, I've forgotten the other cities.
Okay? Thank you Chair. Thank you. Anyone got any very quick questions for our county council here tonight? No? Thank you. Sorry, the count was off.
Sorry. Can that map be available online or something? Can't have information. Can we tie you down and photograph it?
Is there still doing, are they still cleaning up the drains?
Yes, oh yes, that's a good news story. We've got the guys that are going around, they go around, they do approximately 170 drains in a day, that's their maximum. We've got a really good team out there that are doing it. He's trying to, he's Mr Smart Guy and he's trying to break his record. We have a problem with what we suck out. If it's water, it just puts it onto the flip side. If it's gunged detritus, then it's got to take it, believe it or not, to Henfield. I can't understand why, but it's taken over to West Sussex because it's not very nice material.
Right, because in Western Road, I spoke to one of the firemen guys. Oh, yeah, no, the one where...
If there's one specific drain, just say it.
Spexells. There's two drains there that are not on the list.
Can I say it?
No, they're not on the list, but there's a tree burns out for them.
Perhaps I can do that offline.
Yeah, I'll send you any map.
Okay.
Thank you.
So 10B is to receive reports from Rother's district councillors. I don't think we have any of those. And 10C is to receive Rother reports from town councillors. Have anyone got any reports they'd like to make? Councillor Crofty?
What do you want to do? Okay. Basically, there's, so I've had a gentleman, both me and Paul, a gentleman, Mr Whiting, was complaining about where he lived, there's been a few instances of urinating against his front door and drug use. I had pleasure meeting Mr Whiting yesterday and we discussed a few options that could be helpful for him and I replied, I spoke to him today and he was very happy with the outcome, so that's one good thing. I've been told that peacocks are not coming back to Bexhill now. So there's a legal issue over that. And with the, a resident was wanting to know about transparency and proactivity for what the town council are doing. They're trying to find out for the first year and haven't, they want to know what's been spent and what the money's been achieved, spending it on and would like to see a breakdown, simple and easy to read terms.
The answer would be to direct them to the website with all the minutes and the Agenda Item Minutes.
I think that's for the first, the first year.
Yeah, it is on there, right, and it's all in the finance.
That's fine. And obviously, like I said, some shop owners are worried about banking closes and funding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other Rother reports? Councillor Byrne?
Thank you Chair. Don't know whether you've heard, there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook. The Grosvenor Park care home is closing and somebody took it upon themselves to say, is it going to be turned into a hostel for whatever? Facebook went crazy. So I've spoken to the managing director of the company that owns the Grosvenor Park. Currently, their focus is on relocating their 35 residents and that is going very well, with a lot of help from social services at county. And he's very satisfied with the service he's getting from county and evidently the relatives of the various patients, not patients, but inmates who are going to be moved are so far very happy, so they haven't hit any speed bumps and that's where their effort is concentrated at the moment. There are no plans going forward. They haven't yet decided if the building will probably be sold, but they've not had any expression of interest from anybody, certainly not the Home Office. So at the moment, as I say, they're managing the closure. They seem to be a very responsible company, very aware of their position in Bexhill and I'm very willing to talk, so watch this space and let's hope that somebody does. If someone could come in with a bid to turn it into a hotel, that would be absolutely wonderful. I don't know whether that's even feasible, but at least I'm talking to the head man.
Always good to have facts rather than Facebook rules.
Indeed, and I'm putting a statement out on Facebook and on our little website as well.
Any more Rother reports from town councillors? So I'll move on to Item 11, Governance Administration. Appendix G with the summons, had a suggestion of purchasing Dropbox Business plus subscription for the team. And it's for us to decide whether we agree that. I've read it myself and I'm sure everybody here has. I've talked it through with the clerk and it just seems the most logical thing to recruit. So anybody who wants to talk about it or councillor Crofty?
Thank you Chair. The only thing it says about the script is that, the only thing it doesn't mention is the costings.
I see them.
Yeah, £12 per user per year.
£3.5.
Eighty-fourty.
Right, so it's on there. Right, so it's on there, right, okay.
On, sorry, on sort of the costings, it tells you okay what the costings are. Is there a saving coming from it, from other avenues that won't be done anymore or something? I don't quite understand.
I don't believe it will be a saving as such, but it will make work that much more effective that currently it's worked on laptops and stuff. So if a member of staff is off and something that they are storing, it will be put into Dropbox. So Julie will manage the access of the varying folders, so there'll be security behind it and it will enable people to track everything that is done in it in a much more professional way as opposed to having a massive, great big server run separately and then you've got all the costs of the server. And lots of organisations are going through the Dropbox process. It's not an uncommon thing, we're just haven't gone down that route yet. So the suggestion is now's the time to do it. Councillor Jacklin?
At work, we have this Microsoft thing, I've forgotten what it's called. Presumably, we have a Microsoft ShareSave or something, where we can access each other's files. Is that the purpose of this Dropbox thing, to share files? And if so, could the Microsoft provision do it?
Certainly. For you to, we have, we do have Microsoft OneDrive, so we do use SharePoint. So that you could, you share a link to a file and you can both operate it. But when you save that, then you've got to have all the links to all those documents to be able to get to them. Whereas Dropbox shows on your Explorer files and folders. So I'll be able to go into Agendas and Minutes by dates, by committees. All the documents will be in there and then everybody can, with got permissions, can get access to amend them. So it's much easier to use than SharePoint for the volume of documents that we are all working on.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Otherwise, it could be a proposer or a nominator and a vote. And I'm quite happy to propose that we accept this, as no other hand's going up to any other questions. So I'm proposing this, I just need a second before it. Councillor Pym? All those in favour, please show your hand. Carried unanimously. 11B, to note that MP Dr Adrian Mullin will be visiting Harbin. And we now have the date, which is the 16th of November of this year, around about 11 o'clock. So there will be the availability for potentially six councillors. Those that want to go in and maybe, he's going to be meeting a staff within the Harbin jury. It's going to have to be on a first come, first served, so if you want to go there on the 15th of November at 11 o'clock, please email the clerk and it will be on a first come, first served basis. I won't be going because I've met him several times, so I give other people the opportunity to meet him if you wish to.
Could I just ask, is he meeting us on a one-to-one basis or as a collective?
Just be in the hub, so it would be whoever's there and just talk to whoever. He's very amiable, he'll just go and talk to someone. Okay. So that's 11B. Item 12, Channel View East Public Convenience Lease, to note response from Rother. We're still waiting for the response. Your questions that were created from, it was the last time on the agenda that councillor Goss fed into the clerk, have been sent to Rother and await for an update. And we did mention that at the leaders' meeting that we had last week, so it's with them. Item 13, Bexhill Museum, to consider funding the Edgerton Park Public Convenience. So you've all had the paperwork, we've talked about this many times before. I will open it to a debate, but I have to be quite mindful that we've got a lot of detail to get through tonight and there's a planning meeting after this. So I don't intend talking about this for any length of time. We've all had time to study the paperwork, it's been sent to us. Rohan has kindly presented to us before and we've had opportunities to ask questions and you had everything that I had had. So it's really for discussion. So who would like to go first? Councillor Pym was first and I'll move that way.
Yeah, I'll pick up a point that was mentioned earlier on by a member of the public and I think I asked this previously. We are purchasing a toilet block and they look excellent and they're badly needed in the environment, the park there and the museum there. But I'm struggling to understand, we are purchasing it as something that we're going to own ourselves? Or are we purchasing it that the museum is going to own? Or are we purchasing it for Rother District Council to own? After which, are we then building in a maintenance plan for something that the museum owns? Or something that Rother District owns? Or is it something we own that we can, because if we can buy it, we might as well own it ourselves and maintain it ourselves.
Okay, so I can make that quite clear, I think, which might help everybody understand where we are. In this presentation, which was given to us previously, it is very clear, on this page here, it says arrangements for handover to the actual owners and their cleaning and maintenance team. So in effect, we would be, if we agree, given the grant to provide the building to be constructed, but it would be Rother's building because Rother are responsible for the museum. But it would be Rother's building, because Rother are responsible for the museum, and it's on Rother's land, it will not be Bexhill Town Council. We won't own it, then we'll go back round the loop of Rother have offered us the opportunity to lease toilets, which this council have said no. So, we may choose to do something different, but in effect, we won't own this. Because we are giving a grant to the museum to get the building built for the benefit of our residents in the town. That is what the request is for, we've heard it all before that the building where the current toilets are. They're either vandalised, they flood, there's been two fires there in the last five years, and. If that fire took over the whole of the museum building, all the artefacts of the background of Bexhill. Would be destroyed potentially because of where the toilet is, the museum is expanding, and they've come up with this suggestion. We will be given the grant direct to the museum, we will then have nothing to do with that. Unless we renegotiate with Rother to take on the cleaning and the maintenance of a brand new toilet in Bexhill. With a lease, if Rother would give us a lease for it, if we wished to take that bit on. So, it, does that make sense, that's as I understand it from what I've investigated this week, from reading this.
Could I, could I just come back on a few points, I'm amazed there, could you answer something, I'd like to. So in effect, we are providing a loan to, well, no, we're actually purchasing something. That in future, we might want to lease back off the person that we're giving it to. It, it's bloody stupid.
Potentially, yeah, Council Dr.
In answer to your question about, does it make sense, I understand what you said, but no, it doesn't make sense. We balked at leasing toilets, we wouldn't lease toilets, people in Little Common still cannot go to a public toilet in Little Common. We wouldn't spend a hundred and thirty thousand pounds on the toilets in Little Common, and yet we're gonna give a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty nine. To the museum, I don't even know why the museum are being obliged to build a toilet in Edgerton Park. They've got the toilets in the museum, and I know they're gonna get rid of them for the various reasons you've just said, but how come it's a museum problem? To supply the toilets in Edgerton Park for Rother, and they're coming to us for the money to do it, it makes no sense whatsoever.
Okay, moving down the line, Council Dr.
Um, I think it is only fair that the councillors have a good understanding regarding this request for grant fund, grant funding. The museum are asking us for an amount between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty thousand pound, as I've been, uh, told. In the beginning, RDC had a grant approved for a toilet at Peversham, and some time later, they changed that location to Edgerton Park. Becoming partners with the museum and others, who also wanted to add another toilet to the project. Central Government.
Council Dr, can we just keep to the facts about this grant and the toilet?
Yes, I'm leaving.
You're, you're spreading.
Well, I mean, I'm just giving the background here, uh, central government would have been made aware of the change and. Would certainly have had to be assured that there was funding for the second toilet on this project, to approve the grant. When the first toilet was installed, the museum put in the base and plumbing, paying for this themselves, I am told. But knowing, but not knowing where the money would come from to build this toilet. The land belongs to Rother, and anything built on it belongs to Rother. What is happening is that Bexhill Museum are lobbying BTC for the whole amount of the money to build this toilet. Which will belong to RDC, this is not the first time we've been asked for this funding by the museum. And up until the last time, when they were here, they admitted they had not sought funds nor raised any money towards it themselves. When they put the base in, it was on the presumption that we would fund it, I am against this council being used and manipulated in this way. Thank you.
Okay, Council Jacklin.
Um, so I think the public feel that they have given the town council money to provide toilets. This is quite a lot of money, and it will mean that there are some toilets, I realise that the who owns it bit does your head in, but I'm gonna ignore that. Um, can you clarify who would pay to maintain it?
According to this document here, it clearly says arrangements for handover to the actual owners and their cleaning and maintenance team. Which would be Rother District Council. So we wouldn't be responsible for cleaning it, and actually, you're quite right that, as we said before, we did put a hundred and fifty thousand pounds onto people's. Um, council tax bills in preparation in case we took on the toilets, and we didn't take on the toilets, so we've actually already. Um, sorry, can I have, quite, thank you, so we do actually have some money sitting in the bank, and this is a. Brand new set of toilets, and the experience that I'm reading about is that. Less likelihood to be vandalised if it's brand new than what it is old, and what I'm hearing from residents is, we want toilets. In Edgerton Park, there is one set of toilets which is not for use for everybody, only certain members of society. There is no other toilet facility anywhere near unless you go onto the seat front, and Edgerton Park is the most used. Park in Bexhill, and we've charged residents a hundred and fifty thousand pounds in last year's precept. And we've been asked to fund something, in actual fact, the cost of the town council could only be a hundred and nine thousand if you take the VAT off. So numbers have been all around the place, of a hundred and twenty-two, a hundred and forty, but if you take the VAT off, which is a town council. We would go to come back if we paid the bill direct to the people that do it. So it is only a hundred and nine thousand to provide a brand new toilet, I'm gonna come to Council of Goss next.
Um, yeah, agreed, but that, the hundred and fifty thousand was for cleaning and maintenance of the toilets, not for. Providing them, and, uh, thi- this was sort of one of the toilets, so okay, if we agreed to take over cleaning and maintenance. That's one thing, but that's not providing the cost for the whole toilet for Rother.
Yeah.
And we are also, out of that hundred and fifty, we are paying for Devonshire Square at the moment.
Yeah.
And we may be paying for Channel View East if they ever get round to agreeing.
Yeah, yeah, we might go next to any other comments, Council Dr.
I was just gonna say, I wouldn't be a hundred percent sure about creative accountancy, because I know Rother once tried to help. Somebody been paying a bill for the AT and the financial people told them, no, you can't do that, so I'm not sure we, how we can. Pay, knowing that we're avoiding the AT.
We wouldn't be avoiding it, we will pay the bill direct for the construction or the end costs, direct. And as a town council, we will be able to pay that AT back. Any other comments?
I've just got a last thing to say, I think through all this fiasco, the people that suffer through this are the people of Bexhill.
Yeah.
And it only Rother District Council were open and honest with us.
Stop, I'm not having any criticism about Rother, this is about.
They deserve criticism.
Thank you, Council Dr.
I agree, and I knew somebody, if not many people, would bring up the fact that residents want toilets, of course they do, and we want that as well. That's what we do want, but we, the way we're being cajolled into this is, um, not right at all. It's absolutely not right, and this, this debate is not about whether people want toilets, it's about us as a council. Giving away money that is from the public purse to whoever is asking for it if we agree to that. So it's about the grant, it's not about do people want toilets, I understand that.
Okay, Council Crossy.
Thank you Chair, and basically, the issue with the toilets, public toilets, is that Bexhill Town Council never shut them. Rother did, for a trial period, that trial period is still going.
You were just talking about.
I know, I'm just saying, and I don't believe that we should be spending residents' money on something that's gonna be given to Rother District Council. And then we're gonna have to maybe pay it back, if it was just us paying for a toilet, and it's us that owns it, then that's a different matter. And that's better, now, Rother can't have their cake and eat it, simple as that.
Okay, so this is just about these toilets.
Yeah, that's what I.
As Council Jacklin said, we need to get away from, this is the fact of the matter, that. Potentially, we could create a three cubical toilet for the use of all, for a hundred and nine thousand pounds after that. In the biggest park in Bexhill, and this is being recorded, so residents will be able to look at it. And we have to be really comfortable as a group of elected councillors, that we can say, we won't spend a hundred and nine thousand on producing a brand new toilet. If, if members here tonight are happy with that and they vote against it, then that's fine, it's a democratic world that we live in. Council Winter.
Thank you Chair, I'm just picking up on your point there, you know, members are comfortable, blah, 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 I'm more than comfortable, um, to vote against this. Uh, because there are four toilets in my ward that are all closed, um, and yes, Edgerton Park is the biggest park, of course it is, we all know that. Um, but I also, in my wards, partially have, um, Little Common Rec, and we have, again, sharing it with. Council Drson, um, Little Common, um, and we have Coonan Train Station, there are no toilets in St Marks, as I'm sure there are in other wards. But it's, you know, okay, we're gonna spend a hundred and nine, a hundred and four, a hundred and fifty, whatever, you know, we, you know, pick out the air today. On a brand new toilet that we're gonna give straight back to Rother, and they're gonna go, well, no, actually, you can't have the free hold, but you can have the lease hold for a mop and bucket. Well, no, I don't quite agree with that.
All right, I'll take Council Drson, then I'm gonna put it to a vote.
Just one of the comments that you said, I have got no problems with spending a hundred and nine thousand pounds for toilets. That a council will own and a council providing for residents, I do have a problem with a hundred and nine thousand pounds. Going to Rother via the museum in a deal to get a toilet that we might then lease back.
Okay, I think I've, given everyone enough time for the debate, so I think it goes down to a, um. Do we want to do this, yes or no, either option one, two, three or four, um, and three is the cheapest option for the town council, a hundred and nine thousand. So, um, do we need a motion for that, or is it just a straight vote?
Yeah.
Straight vote.
Yeah.
All those in favour?
Could I have a recorded vote please?
Could you read out the actual motion, the wording of the motion, please?
So it's for us to decide which one of the four options that, um, has been suggested. Option one is, make a direct grant of a hundred and thirty thousand pounds to Bexhill Museum. Add, add ten percent to that for a contingency, including mural artwork, which takes it to a hundred and forty-four. Pay the net invoice direct of a hundred and nine, or Azerbaf with a separate grant of ten percent. For the museum services, including project management, which would take it to a hundred and twenty thousand, so really, we're looking at the hundred and twenty thousand. Um, which is excluding that, because someone's got to manage that, the services and the project managing and, and. Or you could do the hundred and nine and not have the mural.
So that's option one, I think we need very clear wording on exactly what we're voting on.
Should there be a motion to ask whether we want to?
Yeah.
So then, we'll, we'll do it a different way, rather than taking one of these four, um. I'll put the motion forward, make it straightforward, and the motion would be, does the town council wish to provide a grant? To Bexhill Museum for the provision of the standalone toilet in Edgerton Park?
Could we please have a recorded vote on this?
And could you do a recorded vote for that?
Can you read out the names?
Yeah, I'll read them out, all those in favour of providing a grant to Bexhill Museum. To create a three cubical standalone toilet next to the, um, one that is already there in Edgerton Park. Please show your hand, and I'll read your name now, Council Jacklin, Council Wilson.
Council Burn.
And Council Burn, sorry. All those against? Council of Cotty, Council of Pym, Council of Drson, Council of Raybo. Council of Winter, Council of Thomas, Council of Goss. And Council Watson. All those abstaining, one extension of Council Cal. Thank you. Council Pym.
Could I please put forward a motion to ask, um, you or the clerk at the next leaders meeting, or whichever is quicker. To contact Rother District Council with a view to looking into the possibility of actually purchasing and owning this particular site. Because desperately, we can see amongst us, we would like the toilets to be there, but we would like to. Just jump over this hurdle of the ownership issue, and if they're willing to turn around to us and say, yes, okay, purchase them, own them, maintain them. They're yours, get on with it, we will gladly do it, I'm sure I can speak for everybody here, so can we enter into that negotiation speedily, please?
Could you probably see that down as an easy motion, please?
Anyone, uh. Could we please enter a negotiation to, with Rother District Council, to discuss purchase of this, purchasing the free hold of this?
Is it negotiation, or, so your initial one was to request ownership?
Seek permission for ownership of, of the.
Seek permission for ownership of the proposed new toilet in Edgerton Park.
And the land.
Ownership of the new toilet and the land.
And, well, the free hold where it sits on, because it'd be a standalone building.
Okay, so I'll read it back to you. As a result, write to Rother District Council to seek permission for ownership of the proposed new toilet and the land that it sits on in Edgerton Park.
Yeah, I think that, that will actually, hopefully then opens to negotiation, hopefully, we are all hopeful.
All those in favour? All those against? Okay, I'm going to move on to item fourteen, which is to receive a funding request for eighteen hours, for eighteen hours. You have the documentation? So I might just, yeah, to add a little bit more to this, because I've had some electronic messaging today with, um, Dr Mandy Curtis.
Sorry Chair, just to re-claim my interest, I'll, I'll stay in the room, but I won't vote.
Okay, okay, um, I, I had some messaging today, um, they haven't actually in their paperwork, they're just asking for support. They haven't actually asked for what support they're after, so I've clarified that, and they're, they're looking for. Three thousand pounds a year for three years, so nine thousand pounds over three years, which is exactly the same as. The money that we have given to other organisations within Bexhill. Um, a follow-up to that is, it will enable them to gain further grants from outside of Bexhill. And it's less easy to do so unless you've got the local council involved in it, it's the added bit to it. I don't have any more information than what anyone else has, I think it's fair to share that in advance whilst talking about it. So again, I don't want to spend a long time talking about it, I think it's a quick round the table, and I see hands going up already. So I'll start at the other end of this table, so Council Raybo.
Thank you, um, as an event organiser, I fully appreciate that organisers do need a little help sometimes. And here at the Bexhill Town Council, we have accommodated many grants and are pleased to have helped. But we have policies and procedures and the norms to fill in an application form, saying how much you request, I don't believe this has been done in this case. Council was presented with literature which on inspection was actually researched by the organiser. Funded by Brighton University, where she works, and this, um, and she actually wrote it up with another person. It's not very transparent, it doesn't say that on the literature that we got, um. She also quotes that the town with a three-hour event. Made something like two hundred and seventy-nine thousand pound, all I'm gonna say about that is, I don't think so. That is a highly exaggerated figure for a three-hour event.
Can I just keep to the facts?
Yes.
You cannot question the reporters.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Wait a minute, it's been made by a professional and presented to us, please don't question any numbers in it, that's not appropriate.
Right, okay, um, I would like to say that, um, whether or not we give this grant. It's obviously going to go ahead anyway, because it's advertised on the internet, and this is another case of us. And this is another case of us, you know, giving our public money for something to a business. They are a business. They've got eight paid staff. Um, and I would like to see if we do give them money, or anybody else in fact, that we do pump priming, which RDC used to do, which is where they spread the money over a three-year period. Um, and it's not the same amount every year. It decreases so that it helps them, but then they can, you know, it washes its own face after that. I would finally like to say that they have mentioned the carnival, which I'm not too sure why they have. It's a different entity altogether. The carnival is a longstanding community event that raises money for local issues. And eighteen hours, I don't think, uh, do the same. Thank you. It would have been nice to see them here as they're asking for a grant.
So we do have two members.
Oh, there you are, okay. Hello. Right, sorry about that, okay.
So, but I can't ask them to speak unless I close the standing orders.
No, fine, okay.
So I'm coming down this way. Councillor Drayson.
Um, I was very much in two minds on this one, for some of the reasons that councillor Raybode said. But it was this lack of a figure and very much now with three thousand a year for three years. And it will help them get other monies. I'm probably in favour of it. I'm, I'm, I can't carry with the figures, but they only had a one percent return on their questionnaires or surveys and they've extrapolated a lot from a one percent return. And it would be nice to see it spread out. I know they mentioned that in the paper, not all in the seafront, a bit at a time, because the businesses, the restaurants do say they were full, some were full, they're full on a Saturday anyway, so that made no difference to them. So it needs to be spread somehow. I went this year and I actually found the seafront very uncomfortable because it was so crowded. And we left.
I can say they had four thousand more people than they expected last year.
But I'm, I'm sort of in favour right now with that reduced figure.
Councillor Plim.
Before I start, I'd like to declare an interest. I'm yesterday elected chair of the Bexhill Carnival Committee. And so I very much come from that, uh, viewpoint. And I was particularly, um, annoyed to see that they wanted regular support that Bexhill Town Council have offered the carnival, because they were asking for similar support. Now, they are a totally different organisation. This paperwork here, excellent as it is, is very, very good to highlight the money that was spent in Bexhill, the people who come to Bexhill. If the volunteers for the horse show, for the carnival and for the, um, Bexhill one hundred could afford this sort of research, they would provide exactly the same type of detail to this committee and to this council. They would also be able to come to us and say, we've actually given five thousand pounds to the air ambulance that the, the horse show did. But they're actually giving money to voluntary organisations within the town. There is nothing in this preset, uh, pre, um, pre-seed here that says what money they're giving back to voluntary groups in the town. Nothing at all. I would much rather this council fund voluntary groups helping other voluntary groups than a private organisation fund, uh, assisting private businesses within the town.
Okay. Councillor Cottee.
Thank you Chair. Um, eighteen hours, I've been to some of the events that were actually in the town, uh, the Christmas, near Christmas time and also, and also the after dark one. Um, which made the businesses in like Western Road and that, uh, popular busy. Um, but then they, they diverted down to the seafront and it kind of killed off the town. And so that's probably why a lot of businesses have said to me that, um, they'd rather have it more like focal points like Dench Square, where things like that's for speed would be ideal, because then it will actually bring some much needed, uh, businesses, uh, tills ringing, so.
Chair, apologies for being late. Um, I, I'll talk more just on, on, they've had a lot to do with Sidley in the last couple of years and and I will talk on, on what happened in Sidley and I can say the people really received really well. The weather was against them and the heart of Sidley as well, but the people enjoyed the day and the smiles were there to be seen. So I think you have to weigh up the businesses and I, I, I get that there is a process and that process needs to be followed though, for everybody. But I, I'm, I say the people in Sidley and what I've seen in Bexhill, I went to the first one and, uh, yeah, they're brilliant and it's received well. Thank you.
Councillor Goss.
Um, I tend to agree with councillor Plim and one of why, uh, all this time, they do some good events, but why have they not applied in the normal way through the form on the website, et cetera, for a grant with their justification for it?
Councillor Byrne.
Thank you Chair. Um, first of all, yes, eighteen, I, eighteen hours undoubtedly run excellent events. Um, three years' support. I mean, we seem to be, well, not we seem to be, for the people of Bexhill to have an event, it would seem that the three thousand for this coming event is, is a good idea, but I totally take councillor Plim's view that if in subsequent years, other organisations were to come part, were to come forward with similar town events, but charitable, using local volunteers, more of a community spirit, I'd, I'd love to see sort of in future years, I'd love to see the eighteen hours proposal, but I'd love to see two or three other proposals against which we can measure benefit to the town. So I'm all for giving them one year's support. But three years, I, I think we're closing the door to, the town board have already said, working together means we can do all sorts of things. We're already getting more of a community spirit around community events with councillor Plim being elected to chair of the carnival. So let's not close the door on years two or three, two and three, but let's go ahead with year one.
Councillor Jacklin.
Um, I like councillor Byrne's suggestion that we look at a number of things and decide how much money we give to some or none of them. Um, the interesting thing I picked up in the research was the two people with mobility issues really liked it. And there are a lot of people in Bexhill who've got mobility issues and regardless of what we do, if we can do something that brings a smile to their faces, like what you picked up in the research, that would be rather good.
Okay, sorry councillor Raybode, you've had your chance. Anyone else? You only get one chance to speak on when we're debating.
Okay.
Sorry, you did have.
That's fine.
So I'm just gonna, I've done this before.
Sorry, you said what I wanted to say, I don't mind.
I've done this before at President Collins. Um, I just want to correct a couple of things that were said. It is an organisation, but it is a not-for-profit organisation. So After Dark do employ people, but it's a not-for-profit. So they're not there to make profit. They're there to reinvest all of the income back into educational needs or support groups. Fundamentally female support groups, some non-nationals. They do an awful lot of unseen. I'd recommend popping in there and seeing what they do. Um, we do have a risk if we don't do something, that this event may not happen. And that takes a risk of potentially twelve thousand or maybe more, maybe less coming to the town. People observed about not applying in a normal way. We have set precedents before, because the seventies event that was done wasn't applied for in a normal way. And they were given more than this. Um, the carnival event wasn't applied for in the normal way, that went straight to full council. So having done that twice for two other organisations, I think it's a bit unfair to criticise an organisation who's seen it happen somewhere else, go down the same route as two others. We have to think about the residents of Bexhill. Of those twelve thousand, I'm told there was a significant amount of people from Bexhill that went to it. There is nothing in Bexhill from Christmas round till spring. And this is at the end of January, when it's all dark and it's dreary and from what I've heard, it's a brilliant event. And with the money that we are dishing out, we'd have to be very careful that we're not seen to be treating, it is a different setup to the carnival, I accept that. Because the carnival, our volunteers, these are employees, hence why we get more information. Um, but we can only deal with the information we've got and we have to accept what we've got in front of us. Um, I rather fancy the idea coming over from my right-hand side over here about doing it for one year. Um, but that would need a motion. So I'm going to go around the table very, very quickly to give everyone one more chance, because I see a lot of hands going up now.
Yes. Um, was there a reason for me to invite you, because I was here at the beginning, so they could have smoked at the beginning for three minutes? So because I've been sitting outside, so I know that's when I walked in.
Yeah, yeah.
So could we suspend, so they could have a platform for three minutes? I'm asking you the question, I'm not.
Up to you.
Yeah, okay.
Because you'd have to put that.
Would it be of benefit to councillors to hear one or two of the people talk for five minutes, no more than five minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I just ask? If they're asked you to speak, are you happy to be recorded?
Do I, do I say it's the duty or?
I was just going to make sure they're ready, because they might not be prepared.
I'm, I'm going to suspend the standing orders for five minutes to give After Dark five minutes to talk to us.
Sorry, just technically do we have to vote on it? Because I say yes, let's suspend standing orders.
No, it's my choice.
Yeah, you do have to suspend.
We didn't go in that.
Stand by the microphone.
If you can come and stand. I'm going to have to be time restricted and give you five minutes to help us. Thank you.
Thank you everybody. Thank you for having us here this evening. I really appreciate all of your time. Um, I'd like to start by saying I myself am a Bexhill resident. I'm employed by eighteen hours. Um, I've worked on Bexhill After Dark for three years in various capacities. I started as an artist, creating inspiration for After Dark. Subsequently employed, um, uh, to work on After Dark as a now lead producer for it. Um, I've been working in events for my entire adult life and it's what I'm really passionate about. I have family locally, they go to school locally, I am a local person. Um, Bexhill After Dark gives me a lot of meaning and I know it gives people throughout the town something to look forward to. And I think we spend a lot of time focusing on the finances of what Bexhill After Dark gives back and that's a lot of what's being discussed. A hundred percent it's incredibly important, but what mustn't be forgotten is Bexhill After Dark happens at a time of year that people need it the most. And it gives something that people will never get to experience. It's something completely different, which has been said more than once, it is different. Um, and we're not trying to be like anything else. Um, it is the only festival of its kind that happens within our, our area, within Rother. Um, we are also hosting Light at the South East for a second year running, um, which means we get national recognition for what we're doing. It gives Bexhill national recognition for what's going on. Um, I'd also like to clear a few things. So eighteen hours being non-profit. Every penny that we go in, we run project to project. We do ten festivals annually. Um, every penny that goes through Bex, through the, the, through eighteen hours goes into the event. If anything is surplus, which there seldom is, but if we do have surplus, it gets funnelled immediately into our education. Um, so we do, uh, resources and, um, we have a library for local schools. So it goes straight into that project and we give that, we pay it forward as much as we possibly can. We do support local and, um, national performers. We like to bring the national to the locals. So the local performers that perform as part of Bexhill After Dark get that national exposure and that international exposure with the artists that they work alongside. So I think that equally is important. Um, and with the study that was done, that was commented on a few times, I think it needs to be understood that us as eighteen hours, we didn't do that study. That, that study was done by the University of Brighton. So parts of the research within the book were done by us. The economic impact study was done by the University of Brighton, by two doctors that's independent from us. So the challenges around that and our kind of input from that really has to be kind of separated. Um, thank you.
All right, you've got one minute of the five minutes left, so quick questions, very quick, Andrew.
Thank you Chair. Um, you had two events eighteen hours used to do, one's Bexhill After Dark and the other was a storytelling one.
Yes, we still do storytelling. It's separate, it's Hastings Storytelling Festival.
It's Hastings, but does it come back to Bexhill at all?
No, so Hastings Storytelling Festival is its own charity. We produce their event for them. It's not our event. It's not eighteen hours event.
It's not.
We're the producers. Yeah, so we work for a charity.
The old grand, the grand tourism granny's in there.
Yeah, so we do, do, we used to do Rother, Streets of Rother, which was another festival, another thing that happened. We do Streets of Weldon. Um, we do various streets events. We're doing one in all in the coming weeks, a public local.
One, one final question. Who wants a final question? Councillor Raybode.
Uh, thank you. Um, I did mention just now, uh, when I was speaking, that, um, the paperwork, the literature was done by, uh, Mandy Curtis.
Yes.
I didn't say her name, but that's her name, Dr Mandy Curtis. And one other doctor. So they're the two doctors. Are they the two doctors that you're speaking about now?
Yes, Doctor Jones. Helped to grow and Dr Mandy Curtis, yes.
Of eighteen hours.
Of eighteen hours, yes.
Thank you.
They've been done independently through University of Brighton, verified independently through University of Brighton.
Where she works. Just saying. Thank you. I like to be transparent, that's why.
Hundred percent, I agree. I want to be part of that as well, hundred percent.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
You've used all five minutes. I'm now going to, um, open standing orders. So we're, we're in the position, councillor Drayson.
Uh, first of all, I want to say, you work in the town, you live in the town, has family that go to school in the town, why is he on the council? And, um, I'd like to actually move a motion that we actually support this with the three thousand pounds for each of the three years.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second of that? Second of them, councillor Cottee. All those in favour of that? One, two, three, four, five. All those against? One, two. That is carried five to two. Any extensions? Three extensions. It's still carried five to two. Okay?
Can I, can I just state for the record Chair that I, I would have been very supportive of a one-year grant. So I'm not voting against eighteen hours of their event.
Yeah.
Just the three, the three-year.
Me too.
Me too.
Thank you for clarifying. That's, that's been passed. So I now move on to item fifteen, Rother district council liaison. You, you had the notes from the leaders meeting that was last Friday. Um, again, a very open and transparent discussion. It's all been sent out and they're now going to be planned for the third Friday every other night.
Chair, can I ask, I, I accept that minutes of committee meetings are for noting and we can't ever ask questions. When do we get a point? Can we ask questions about notes of the leaders meetings? Because you're just saying we're noting this. I have a couple of sort of questions over what was said or what, what's been reported in the reg and I don't know if I'm allowed to ask it at this meeting.
I can't think of any other meeting that you would be able to ask that. So I haven't been there, I'm happy to answer that.
Well, I'll ignore me first to concentrate on the main one, which says, two asset transfers, item D, museum to discuss. Councillor Oliver suggested that town council contact museum board to explore this idea further. What idea?
So the idea, the cost of the museum is within special expenses. And as part of devolution, um, there's always been an option for the town council to take over the museum. Councillor Oliver suggested that if this town council wants to do that, we could contact the museum direct. No one's going to do that until a motion goes through for council to say, we want to do that.
Thank you. It's just this idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I too found that I could half understand what the notes were on about. And so therefore perhaps a few more words such that we could understand what they're on about would be good.
Okay, it, this particular one was not as easy as others to be fair, because it was done on teams. So I've raised a question, can we avoid doing teams in future? Because you don't have the same relationship building report. So future ones, we hopefully face to face. And that's a valid point. We'll try and make the notes a little bit more expansive, but bear in mind, there are seven there and our clerk takes the notes and she can only type. So, but noted. Councillor Drayson.
So having turned over the page, I've got two more short ones. One is on E, which is to receive any updates on the asset manager of RDC's review of all assets, including closed toilets. Have we given up all hope of, for example, ever reopening Little Common? Is that a dead duck to us?
So the situation.
Is that all about turning it into something else?
Yeah, the situation was very transparent from them and it is from us. We've had the motion that's been passed that we will only take toilets from Rother district council if we have them on a free hold. And Rother district council will not pass them as a free hold.
Okay.
So they are doing some work to understand what other revenue streams they can create from the toilets that aren't in use at the moment.
Thank you. My last one is a blind gap roundabout. I didn't fully realise that this has dropped off RDC's wishlist and become pointed at the town council, because it was National Highways and it was always a, a Rother district council sort of theme, so.
Just to clarify on that, it is an. Just to clarify on that, it is and has been noted that the town council via Councillor Browesford is coming up with some designs in accordance with the specifications for National Highways. So it was felt, rather than Rother, going to the person at Highways who is looking after it in a point of contact, and then writing to the town council to say, this is what it is, we go route direct to the person who manages it and make sure it's all tidy in preparation for when we're in the place with what.
Thank you. I mean, that makes sense, because I know at one point they were talking about possibly having a competition. But given, um, I mean, I only moved here six years ago and people are still bleating about the parade, the shelters on the West Parade, and they still are. And that was a competition.
My understanding is that Councillor Browesford is working on some designs to take to the relevant committee, and I think it's Unions Committee, and I think she's meant to do that in October, but I wouldn't swear to the earth.
Thank you, Chair.
But it's not going, uh, any costs. It's just a straightforward, it takes out an indirect route and we can then go direct to residents, say, this needs to be done, or this needs to be done, we can go straight to Highways.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move on. Um, fifteen B, to consider feedback for Rother District Council's draft council plan twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight. Have you all looked at Rother District Council's draft plan that has been issued and is up for consultation? Do, is it the wish of this council to comment on the town council's feedback to that plan? Councillor Grayson.
Could we change this somehow above my, I say, at the next meeting, we will have looked at and come back with some ideas?
Um, you'd have to put a motion forward to do that.
Yes, I know.
Are we in time? This is where we can benefit from having Rother district councillors as town councillors. Are we in time feedback-wise?
I've got a clue then, don't worry.
For the next meeting.
I wanna say the non-team have got to vote, but I could be completely wrong.
In which case we won't have time to do it at the next meeting. Councillor Winter.
Well, Councillor Winter is checking there. One thing I would like to comment regarding the draft council plan is it's absolutely, diplomatically, so difficult to get anything out of it. It's a minefield. It's a huge, huge document, and the general public, after they've gone through several pages, must be given up on this. So I, I really would love to see what the response rate is from the general public on this in their consultation, because I found it extremely difficult to access any meaningful information from it.
So this could be another advantage of having four district councillors through, which is today, because they will have read it all during the consultation and they can guide us through the preceding version.
It's, um, Monday, Oc, uh, Monday, oh, sorry, hold on a minute, I'll get my word there. October the twenty-first.
Which is two days before next.
Two days, yeah.
Yeah, my next meeting's on the twenty-third of October.
Twenty-third of October. It's two days before the time limit. So it is an option to give you all time to think what Bexhill Town Council should be doing, but bear in mind you've only got really one working day in between for our clerk to prepare everything that we want to send as a... Councillor Jacklin.
Um, I'm sort of picking up on what Councillor Plim said. It's a rather extensive and ethereal document, which we all may have different views on, and so therefore it may be rather challenging for the clerk to summarise our views on something that we can't necessarily totally understand.
Councillor Crotty.
Thank you, Chair. Especially when it's fifty-four pages long. So.
So it's on the agenda, just to consider feedback. Somebody wants to put a motion forward about anything else, we can vote on it. Or what do we want to do as a town council about feeling back draft council plan? Councillor Crotty.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Is there any chance that Rother will extend it?
Unlikely, I would think. I don't normally extend concerts.
Or could we have like an extraordinary meeting?
I think there might be another way, because an, an EGM creates a lot of extra work and another meeting for councillors come to. Councillor Austin.
Trying to put eighteen people's thoughts and feedback in, it's gonna be impossible. Why is the onus not just being put onto each individual councillor to complete the feedback online? It doesn't need any more than that.
Okay, Councillor Jacklin.
Could we propose a motion that prior to the next plan, the district council consults the town council as part of the development of the plan?
That's a novel idea.
Will we still be here till the twenty-first?
I, I don't. What in general?
I'm just trying to think logically, does that work? And I think probably the answer is, it probably wouldn't, because if they come to us, it's for the whole of Rother. That means they've got to go to thirty-seven, thirty-eight other parish councils. And they have done an awful lot of introductory explanations to their local plan, and this is just the final bit of it. So.
This is the council, not the local.
Yeah, this is, yeah, sorry, yeah, forget that. Um, so I think it's unlikely that they would come back to us and consult this direct, because this is what the consultation's for.
But we should, we, but we do, sorry, we do need to say to Rother, you need to allow for town and parish council dates of meetings when you set consultation end date.
So maybe the answer could be to write to Rother advising of that, but also each individual round here, do their own, yeah.
And can they post it on their page to, for Reddit, look at?
It's on the front page of the, yeah, Rother, where is it?
So, Councillor Byrne.
Well, we've, we've all had, you know, the consultation was advertised widely.
Yeah.
So we've all had a chance. Now, do we think we'd get a consensus? And my feeling is next time round, we probably would with our visioning exercise. So I think this time round, individuals can comment, have been able to comment, and quite a few of us have commented. For the next time, I think it would be a good idea to have a, a, a procedure in place whereby if we do have a concerted, a, a, you know, a mutually held view on any of the topics in there, we should, we should be able to reply as the town council.
Okay.
Uh, and Councillor Grayson's idea of, of, yeah, let's ask the parishes as well. So I think, I think that's a developing, a developing consultation technique, if you like, but we're too late for this one, but please, we can all do it as individuals. Um, and to try and get a mutually held view between now and October, whatever, on, on a document that big, I think we'll be, we'll be, you know.
What I'm hearing is, is a general consensus that it's down to each individual councillor for this year to feedback themselves and not do as a town council.
But we might prepare for next time.
Okay. Everyone's nodding. I'm not gonna put a motion forward. I'm just gonna move on and leave it for town councillors to make their own. All right? Item sixteen, North Eye asylum proposal. We have received the update from the Home Office, as you've all had. Um, and it doesn't really say anything, because nobody knows anything. So what I'm going to suggest, which is slightly radical, is to remove North Eye asylum proposal off the standard item of the agenda, because at the moment, it's not going anywhere. If it does, we'll put it back on. It just reduces the agenda. All those in favour? All those against? One against, but carried. Item seventeen, visioning exercise, um, planning is underway. Um, watch this space. Town Rangers, um, the original plan isn't going to happen, so we've got to explore other alternatives, which our clerk is, um, on the case with. Turning over to item nineteen A, Ralph Report. I've turned to mention this one because the meeting's not too next week.
So next meeting is October the ninth. If appropriate, I will voice the whatevers we've just discussed with respect to input to the Rother plan.
Good place to do so. Um, thank you. Um, System Advice? Anything from System Advice?
So, well, they, I was unable to attend their, their annual sort of, um, bun fight, come tea, come whatever. Unfortunately, I had totally planned to go, but a medical appointment got in the way, which I couldn't duck out of. I will provide a report, because I'm, I've already asked for feedback from that event, and I'm talking to Tracey Knighton, uh, and she's promised to come back to me with a summary, so that'll be available. I'll send that to the clerk in writing the next time.
Okay, thank you. Nineteen C, Bexhill Air Cadet Squadron. I've heard nothing from them, so presumably they know how to get hold of me. I've had an off the record conversation previously, so they don't need anything from me. So, um, nineteen D, um, that's Councillor Timpey, who's on holiday. Nineteen E, Little Beck Farm.
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. And you've had the report from the town board. Um, so I'm moving on to item twenty.
Oh, excuse me, Chair. Could we move, um, uh, item number twenty-six and twenty-five ahead of twenty-four, please?
Twenty-six and twenty-five, no.
Because I might be.
Ah, yes, let's do the rest of it, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, twenty A, uh, there's an motion from Councillor Crotty. Um, I'm asking for training session with understanding autism in the workplace. Uh, that's been carried forward, um, for you to be able to talk us through what you're actually asking, and then we'll make a decision on what to do.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, basically, um, with the, uh, with Julie, with the town clerk asking what can be done and speaking to, um, I've forgotten the name of the lady now. Um, I've looked in with the National autistic society, and they do a, a training at the workplace. It's up to twenty-five, it's face-to-face training for about three hours, and it's up to twenty-five delegates, um, that they will come to us. So I will send the information to, to the clerk, um, to go from there. Any questions? I'm happy to say.
Councillor Grayson.
Do we know the price of the cost?
Price of the cost is, uh, one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine plus VAT.
Ooh.
Councillor Byrne.
Um, can I just say that there was a time before when we were asked to do the autistic training?
Yeah.
And I'm not good at stuff like that, but I thought, do you know what? I'll knuckle down and do it, and I kept putting it off, and then I'd done it. And, um, only to find out that some people didn't do it.
Yeah.
Including you.
I have done it.
Did you do it?
He's done it. I said, yeah.
I'm sure I saw your names.
I couldn't find it.
Okay, fine. Um, yeah, so on that basis, um, I don't know if I fancy doing more of that, you know, when everyone else is going.
Councillor Winter.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, to clarify, is this for us to take part in or members of town council staff? Or every, or both?
Everyone, all twenty, twenty-five people.
Right, okay. So it's three hours during the working day?
Well, look, there's three types of, uh, time to do, morning, afternoon, and evening, I think, but I can send all the information down.
Well, I, I should just say now that I won't be able to attend.
I think that's very normal when you've got members of staff who work from nine to five.
Obviously, for me personally, it would work to be better in the evening, but for the staff, it wouldn't be better in the evening.
Then you'd have to incumbent, play overtime and time and a half.
So it's gonna be more than a thousand, something like that.
Yeah. Councillor Carroll.
Chair, is, um, is there a difference between the online course and that course?
Yes, this one's more, um, working with how colleagues can take someone with autism. Um, it's all, it plays for all things, where this one was more like a yes or no question, the online. It wasn't personal to working with somebody with autism.
Okay.
Councillor Plim.
Yeah, I've had a lot of contact with the National Autistic Society, I have family members that are autism, and, uh, leading between the lines and speaking to various people in the society there, there's very little to be added to doing this course than the actual course we've actually done in autism awareness. It's tailored to the workplace, but it's in effect exactly the same course. So we've been repeating ourselves. For the people that have actually done the, uh, understanding autism training, will be repeating yourself. Um, so I, I think it's, it'd be a throwaway really.
Okay, Councillor Austin.
Yeah, um, just copy what Councillor Plim said. It's, we've, we've done it, or we've got to have the option to do it. Looking at the training record, there's still people that haven't done it. Um, I've never done two training sessions of the same thing within four months of each other. Um, so yeah, I won't be voting.
Councillor Byrne.
Um, did we get a choice of doing the last training? Was it that we could do it if we wanted to, or were we all told to do it? And if we were all told to do it, will the others that haven't done it catch up with the people that did bother to do it?
So I can ask for some of that.
Okay.
It's a, it's a course, and tra, training's important for all councils to be invited, which our part puts training in place.
Yeah.
No councillor can be forced to do any training.
Right.
I can't force anyone to go and log on and do something. It's a voluntary role, so, and there are, only half of the councillors have done it hardened. So nobody can be forced to. Nobody can be forced to attend, um, a course face-to-face. So it is what it is. Councillor Grayson.
I've just written a note here to Councillor Byrne, because I think I've got halfway through it and never actually finished it, so I'm probably on the list of discharges. So can I ask the clerk either way to recirculate the contact so that those who are full of good intentions could finish it?
Yeah. So.
Because I'm sure I logged in with the password, but.
Your, your motion, I think I've given you enough time to talk about it. Your motion, I'm asking for a training session with understanding autism in the workplace. Do you want to make any amendments to that?
No, because the one online is not personal to working in the environment that we're working in.
But that motion doesn't say face-to-face.
Oh, okay, well, that's fine. You can do face-to-face, yes, face-to-face training.
So you'd like that motion, I'm asking for a training session with understanding au, autism in the workplace.
Yeah.
In a face-to-face environment.
Yes.
Could you add that to the motion? Do you, do you have a second for that? Councillor Grayson. All those in favour of that motion, show your hands.
Can it be recorded, please?
Yeah. Councillor Crotty and Councillor Grayson are in for favour of that.
Oh, hang on, sorry, it's a recorded vote, yeah?
Recorded vote.
So who was for?
Councillor Crotty and Councillor Grayson.
Against?
All those against, please show your hand. Councillor Plim, Councillor Winter, Councillor Jacklin, Councillor Byrne, Councillor Thomas, Councillor Gosse, Councillor Ruston. All those abstaining.
I don't think Councillor Gosse's hand was up.
Yeah, I, I can have a hand up. I have now, but first up, staying.
Stay.
Do you all abstain?
Yeah, Councillor Wilson, Councillor Gosse.
And Councillor Byrne, who abstains. So that motion has formed.
Okay.
So twenty B, our hand to Councillor Plim, um, two parts of this, have a view, sir.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, I'm not gonna repeat the motion, other than just sort of say, that's what the motion's gonna be, so that's what you're gonna be voting on.
Okay.
Um, what I will do is give a little bit of more information about the actual event. Um, I found out today the event is gonna be taking place on the third of November, so if there was an amendment needed, it'd be on that date. Um, they, they changed, there's a rival march going on up in London at the same time. I think this is extremely important. Many of you will remember the poster that went out during the Second World War where the grandchildren were looking up at their father, or their father, and saying, what did you do during the war? When you went to history lessons, you must have seen it. But anyway, um, I think this is a similar situation. Our grandchildren, children are gonna be looking at us in years to come and say, what did you do for the environment when the instrument was floating in the sea? And if we, as a body that has an opinion and can actually, um, voice it as a, as a corporate body, if we don't do anything, what are we here for? Um, as I grew up, my, my dad said to me when I was eighteen, pulled me aside, he said, listen, he said, I'll give you one word of advice. He said, don't defecate on your own doorstep. He was a wrestler, a semi-professional wrestler, so he did use that sort of vocabulary. It was a little bit more flappy. But the same is true of the water companies. They shouldn't be defecating on their do, on our doorstep. We heard earlier on Councillor Hollage try and sort of, uh, put the blame away and hide it, that it wasn't a problem, and, you know, a very cloak and dagger sort of way of saying it. But, um, we are, we are, we're experiencing unprecedented le, um, levels of sewage in our waterways and in our seas. This march is a group of people, not weirdos, not cranks. You've got Greenpeace, Royal Society of Protection of Birds, Surfers Against Sewage, National Trust, River Action, World Wildlife, World Wildlife Fund, the Wild. World Wildlife, World Wildlife Fund, the Wildlife Trust, Soil Association, and the Church in Wales, all signing up to this, along with about another hundred and fifty-odd organisations.
Marine Conservation.
They are, Marine Conservation, they are all there to pressure on the government to hold the water companies to account.
Thirty seconds of your three minutes.
And I would like this council to support any councillor that would go there, and it is exactly what the motion says.
Okay. Councilor Grayson.
When I first saw this, I thought, oh no, it's sort of grandstanding, but actually, I like it, and I think we should support it. My only query is, I don't understand the value or what we mean by the second sentence in part one, which is furthermore, we endorse any councillor wishing to attend, I don't know how we endorse it. We're supporting the idea of the march, um, but I'm not sure what it means by endorse the council.
Okay. Councilor Jacklin.
Um, so if we do, um, agree with this motion, could we also propose, for example, funding a bus for a small number of people to go up with a banner or identity or something? Because essentially, what we're saying is that Bexhill is by the sea, and it likes the sea.
Okay, Councilor Byrne.
I was just going to say that, uh, by endorse, I, I thought that we could attend as individuals, but, uh, as individual members of Bexhill Town Council, we could wear identified i- identity badges, or if interviewed by the press or anyone, say, yes, I am, I am here as a town councillor.
Okay, Councilor Carol.
That was my understanding.
Sorry. Um, I, I don't remember the posters, Councilor Plim, but, um, I, I do remember as a child being on, on the, on the base, on the sea, and enjoying those days with my parents, and not being able to do them with my own children now, with the pollution, and that is disgusting, um, on all sorts of levels. Nick Ferrari spoke about this, uh, the Question Time at Delaw, and it was, I, I think he was bang on, that, that people should be up for more things. I think to support it, I mean, it's gonna be a struggle to get a lot of people there. If I, if I'm not working, I, I'd like to see it happen. Is it not something we could bring to our sea, uh, the third of November?
On a Sunday.
I thought it was a Saturday.
No, it's a Sunday.
Um, is it not something we could do, just one end to the other, as a council on Bexhill Prom, where local people can join in on that day, or is that too short of notice?
I, I suspect it would probably be too short of notice. Um, I, I just, I think it's, it has the right sentiment, but there is a lot of misinformation around sewers going into the seas, which Councilor Hollage did allude to, which I half understand. I would just like to flag a concern, whilst there was a long list of people and organisations that are planning to go, there's also a batch of people that they may not be wanted there, that could turn up. And I just go back to two or three years ago, when, what was the organisation? Extension Rebellion? Who were, to all intents and purposes, firing down the line of saving the planet and doing lots of brilliant things, very similar to this, and it got carried away very quickly, and the wrong type of people turn up to marches. So I think we have to be very mindful of supporting a march when we're not in control of who's gonna be at that march. That's all I would say. Councilor Bradbro.
I think you're right, and, um, you know, it could be good to get involved, and it could not be. Maybe, um, people separately are passionate about getting involved, if you like marches, or going up with the banners and stuff like that. But if you don't like that sort of stuff, and if you, you know, it can, they can go badly wrong, especially in London and places like that, so.
Which is why.
The sentiment of it is good, and I understand Council, Councilor Plim's sentiment of it. Um, but we all agree that the whole country knows that our water systems are ruined already. Um, and I think it should be left to each and every person to maybe do that, rather than do it as a council.
Okay, Councilor Crotty.
Thank you, Chair. Um, you can also support this, uh, Surfers Against Sewage by getting, buying a badge. There's a badge that says Ocean Actist, that supports them as well, and you can just, uh, because I had a lady email me and saying about sewage, and I emailed, uh, David Dennis, and he came back with a very thorough what he was doing, and, um, I was very surprised and I thanked him, so I think we can support it in different ways.
So I think I've given enough time to debate twenty B one. You'd like to add anything to it?
Yeah, I'll just reply to some of that. Um, first of all, I'm not asking for any form of funding, or organisation, or anything like this, is exactly what it says. That, that this council openly support the March for Clean Water event, so to support that event. Physically, as a corporate body, say, yes, we support that. And you endorse any councillor that wishes to apply, not payroll them, not get a bus up there or anything like that. If they wanna do that themselves, go and do it, I, I'll be on, I'll, I'll get on that bus. Um, but I'm not asking for anything from this council, other than a corporate acknowledgement and endorsement of it.
Okay, then. So I'm, I'm gonna, instead of the one clear, openly support the march. That we can all do that as individuals, the same as we can all complete a consultation document.
Do you mean publicly? Do you mean to say that publicly, so that people know we support it?
By supporting this motion, you are openly supporting the s- the, the words are there. The words are the words are the words, as I say in these things.
Okay, Councilor Carol.
Just, uh, if you don't mind me asking, Councilor Plim, um, obviously for the Chair, would you like us to be on that list, obviously being a Bexhill town, being on the sea, to be part of the list that is included of, like, the, the World Church, and is that the sort of aim we were looking at? You want us as a council to back that list, to say, we're, we're Bexhill on sea, and it's our sea that's being polluted, and we fully back it?
I honestly think it would be negligent of us not to support this, and not, as a corporate body, to acknowledge this march and say, yes, and say, as a corporate body, we're right behind what you're doing.
Maybe a little bit to a statement like that.
Sorry.
This is me.
Council, Councilor Jacklin.
Um, I, I think our support might need to manifest itself by at least three of us saying, we'll go.
Up to, up to individuals.
Yeah.
Councilor Grayson.
Yeah, I knew you forgot, because I thought we had that.
No.
Um, I just wonder if Councilor Plim would, I can add it, it helps to put in the aims of before the march, so it said, support the aims of the march for, I don't think it's any difference, but, um, I, I'd like to thank Councilor Flin for explaining endorse to, I understand it now.
I think I'm hearing that we're all saying it's right to support it, but it's a very wordy motion, and it says to endorse a council wishing, what does endorse wishing? So if I said, will I go, the town council would endorse me to go.
Well, they would do if they passed this motion.
But what does endorse mean? Well done, you can go. Don't need to match.
Yeah, you acknowledged it and endorsed it, yeah.
Councilor Byrne.
Might I suggest to Councilor Plim that, um, I personally, I'm absolute, well, first of all, I'm right behind it as a, as a scuba diver, well, ex-scuba diver really now, sadly, um, very much for that, and a member of the Marine Conservation Society. Um, I think the, I think it would be better to leave part one of the motion, and when we talk about publicity, this, this will be in the council minutes, and individual councillors can draw attention of the public to the fact that this is a minuteed motion that we have passed. But I think part two is, is, that's where the problems can occ- occur, so I, I would be, if Councilor Plim would be happy to propose motion, part one of his motion, I'd be very happy to support it.
Just to point out, Chair, that they are two separate motions to go forward, so the first one.
Oh, oh, I thought it was part one, o- okay, okay.
Okay, we have a motion before us. I've given the option to do an amendment, do it, and Council Plim is, sorry, Councilor Thomas.
Don't support the motion, a second motion, sorry.
Okay, that's a proposal, a second, uh, all those in favour of supporting twenty B one, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. All those against. Ask. B two. Councilor Plim.
Um, that this council instructs the clerk to publicise as widely as possible. Within Bexhill, we've got notice boards, we've got facilities that we can use ourselves without any extra cost, we've got a website, I'm not asking to put a TV campaign on, I'm not asking to bring superstars down to, to publicise it or anything like that, just use the facilities we've got to, uh, publicise it, and, um, say that we openly support it, and, and anyone that attends the event?
I'm gonna get in first. Is there a pamphlet, leaflet, details of it? Could you get one and send it to the clerk to enable her to do it?
Yes, I could, it's all available on the website, The River Action UK.
It doesn't say that in there, because of.
No, it didn't.
No, so, okay. Councilor Bradbro.
Yeah, I think this is important, because people don't know about it, something like, and so if we could, and we do our bit, if we could get that out there and make other people aware, they might go.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Councilor Thomas. We're talking about it at the moment, but we'll offer a fair amount of second. Councilor Jacklin.
Um, I think we need to add a little bit of substance to our promotion, which, if it isn't these three councillors are gonna go, it might be we will be leaving on the, whatever train it is, to get there in time, so that people can travel together. That's how we did the, um, other protests.
Okay. So if we can get that leaflet, then it makes sense that we can use our tools that we have, and all of us can then share that on our own pages. Is that what twenty B one, twenty B two states? I, I, I'm not sure about hand attendance at the event.
No. Because what if someone does go, sorry, what if someone does go and then doesn't see anyone and goes, well, I actually did tell.
Yeah.
Or gets on that train, because actually they were, they're lies, yeah?
I'm very conscious of time. We are moving on swiftly, and we are time limited. Would you consider amending that motion to say, hand attendance at the event?
To, to take that part out, is that what you're, yeah?
The last five words of that.
Yeah.
Because you can't really enforce anyone to attend.
Well, maybe we could invite people.
My amendment to the motion will be to, um, put the full stop after support, and take away hand attendance, I think.
Yeah. Have you all that? Okay, and we've got a second over here, all those in favour of that? Carried unanimously. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item twenty-one, um, you've seen HMP's fortnight newsletter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the PCC survey, that's been sent as well, to give you all the opportunity to complete that. So that is just for information. Item twenty-two, questions from councillors, the future agenda, Councilor Ruston asked, and that's on the agenda. So to receive questions from councillors now for the next meeting, are there any questions if you'd like the call? Councilor Crotty.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, there's two questions. One, um, would it be possible for the, uh, Bexhill Town Council notice boards have information of their councillors in that ward, with just their email details, so that it, it's transparent, and that if people want contact with the clerk or the councillors, they can do so by that, eastward for that ward? Um, the second question is that, um, regarding the Bexhill hub, is there, uh, policies for pets and children in the hub?
Okay, you want to leave those as questions, not consider them for future motion?
Questions, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilor Grayson.
Given the result of the Extraordinary General Meeting, how should we follow up that? Which was not to progress purchasing that building.
Yeah, so that.
So how do we progress that? Do you need to send it back to the committee?
If you were to ask me a question as a fellow councillor, I would say that would link into the visioning exercises being planned by any of this year.
There's not a question for this meeting, thank you.
And Councilor Crotty.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, the other one I was gonna say about, um.
Is this a question?
It is a question. Could the building that the RVA are taking over, could the Bexhill Town Council share it?
No.
No.
No, not at all. It's a big building.
Okay, and to consider any, um, new risks to be added to the risk register? Has anyone got any new risks to be added to our risk register? It's something we should be asking ourselves at every meeting? No? So, pursuant to section one, open brackets, two, for public bodies, um, as members of public aren't here, we are now closing this meeting for some confidential discussions. So it is ten past eight on the twenty-fifth, I'll declare this meeting at twelve.
I'm close to the public, so.
Right, thank you very much, um, for joining the Bexhill City Town Council Planning and Development Committee for the twenty-fifth of September, twenty twenty-four. Um, we do have a couple of members of the public to us, are there any of you intending to speak? One, okay, I'm sure you know the rules. Brian, if you'd like to go to the mic, stand at the end of the table, and say your piece.
Thank you. Brian Grayson, Chairman of Rother District Council's Planning Committee, I just wanted to repeat what I said at the council meeting earlier. It was so refreshing to have a comment and a contribution from this committee to the appeal hearing, uh, about Turkey Road, and can I please ask you, obviously not every single one, because most, most planning applications sail through without a problem, but it's really important to have the thoughts of the tiny council into the officers. You won't get a reply, because that's the nature of the vix, you won't get a reply, but it's important that your thoughts are there, and considered, and if it goes to the committee, you'll have an opportunity to come and speak to it. Thank you.
I'm sure there's maybe else who'll go on to item, um, two, which is to receive important interests, I don't think there is any. So we'll go on to, um, item three, which is to receive declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interests. Um, just for the record, I will declare I am a member of the district council. Is there any other interests from committee members? No, so we'll go on to four, Chair's announcements. Oh, yes, of course. Uh, we'll go on to item four, Chair's announcements, um, there is none. Item five is to approve the minutes of the following meetings, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth of July, and Friday, the ninth of August. I'm sure we've all read those, are we all happy for myself to sign?
Don't look at me, I wasn't on that.
Right, we'll go on to planning applications, item six, I'll go through them in the usual methods in the alphabet, so we'll start with item A. Councilor Plim.
Yes, um, I'd like the committee to, um, vote against this particular application. Um, when you look at the, uh, comments online, there are a huge amount of comments against this, purely on the grounds that parking is a premium around the streets adjacent to this particular block, although people look at it and think, oh, it's in an ill-industrial state, but the residents of Windsor Road, Leopold Road, Victoria Road, and Reginald Road tend to use the parking facilities that, uh, will be lost as a result of the storage containers being located in this area. Um, and so on that basis, I'm against it, and I hope this committee find against it as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilor Thomas?
Yes, the, um, the Wainwright one, uh, car park is only about half full, but if this goes ahead, um, then that page car park is going to get pretty crowded. But if this goes ahead, um then that paid car park is going to get pretty crowded. As councillor Plin has pointed out, parking in Bexhill is at a premium. And obviously, um some of the people around there are backing on to it are not going to be in favour.
Okay, councillor Carrick.
I'd like to say that um the the room of the parking in St Rose that councillor Plin said is at a maximum now and a lot of working families that need two vehicles, one being for the family and one being for work and and people use that car park especially in the evening. It the only people that lose here is the Bexhill public and once again it just shows that there is no respect for people to earn a living in this town and honest living and to have vehicles to get them to and from work. Uh, I think we know it's a struggle. It's just going to put more traffic onto the roads and make life harder for everybody.
Councillor Wilson.
I'm speaking as in my ex officio role. It's a real struggle to me that that car park is free of charge and full every day. And the one not far from there in Wayne Wright Road is three pound a day and half empty.
Two pound sixty.
I fail to understand why these units will be put in a free car park when there's a car park that's half empty that they could put in there, put them in that car park and have no impact at all on residents. As councillor Plin has said, the relevant roads close by will be impacted. Plus, there's also workers in Bexhill that park their car there. Um. And it just, it it doesn't fit well with me that there's a car park that Rotherown adjacent to it that they could use half of that that isn't used every day with no impact on anyone else. So I'd like to suggest it's objected to as well.
Councillor Carrick.
Sorry, Chair, just to come back. Um, although I haven't forgotten where I lived, I forgot to declare that I do live in Windsor Road. I declare any trust in this particular one.
Okay, um I did too go through the online comments of which, I believe, as of this morning. There was forty two online objections and yet the majority of them were from Bexhill residents who used the car park for one means or another. But actually, quite a few of the comments were actually from people outside of the area. Hastings, outside of Rother East, Farnham Notice as well, who actually all work at the Community Diagnostic Centre, who use the car park to get to and from work. Um, and obviously we all want better NHS facilities in the town. So I think, you know, taking that away and reading the comments that they, the workers from the C D C put in there, you know, would have detrimental effect on the usage of the community um diagnostic centre. Um, but what I find really interesting is when you read the alternative sites that they had a, rather had a little look see that and they they had a look at over the road on Wayne Wright on Beecham Road, the COVID testing centre, the old COVID testing centre, the King off the development side, the old Auto Let building behind the town hall and the old Skinner Shedd site on Beecham Road. But they were all dismissed for one reason and they are all for one reason. There may be planning on these sites in the future. So, you know, okay, we'll take away a free car park for the residents because of these other potential sites, which are all as good as this free car park. But the 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 rate paying residents are losing a service because Rother want to land back, basically. Some of these, yeah, assets. So I I assume we have to put some material planning considerations against why we're objecting um to this. I I I looked at the sheet and it was kind of hard which ones to pick out. So I I picked out three and I'll chuck them out there and you can dismiss except whatever. Um, the first one would be incompatible or unacceptable use is my first one. The second one would be is the loose one, but it's layout density of the building design and visual appearance. And then the third one I've got was deficiency in social facilities.
That's it.
So I, you know, we can go for just the third one or three or pick and mix, whatever.
I don't think two's relevant.
Don't think two's relevant. So if we just do incompatible or unacceptable use, add deficiency in social facilities.
Take number two, no disrespect, number two's visually containers. It's not.
I I think number two is aimed at design of houses and density. That's why I don't think it's relevant.
That's all right. Thank you, yeah.
So I'm having to propose that uh as a committee, we object to the plan application on the grounds of incompatible or unacceptable use. Deficiency in social facilities if there is a second. So councillor Plin, could I please have a vote for all those in favour? Anybody against? Anybody abstaining? So returning to item six, the planning applications, uh we've done A, so we're going to B. C. D. E. Uh, yeah, D, E, F. Uh, councillor Plin.
Yeah, um I'd like this committee to vote against this particular one. Um, the planning application's been in several times for this particular site. And the residents surrounding it are totally against it. Um, it seems to just be basically converged on another site with more residential buildings piled on top of another. Um, there's not much space there for it and it's going to lose. Um, you're not going to have enough parking facilities off-site either. So I'm against this one.
I object for exactly the same reason. It's through the ratified garages where they're going to build houses. It will block the lives of existing residential properties and it would mean more people live in there for less space because the car park won't be able to cope with it. So exactly the same reason as um the services within the area. It's just it's not appropriate where those garages are to put residential property there.
Okay, then we've got some material planned there. Opting to propose, have you got any material and considerations that we can object on?
I'm afraid I didn't come pre-prepared with that information, so.
Um, just trying to remember the sheet, uh.
What was the third one that you had for the car park?
Deficiency in social facilities area. Is that one okay? Councillor Plin.
Um, I would like to say that um a consideration always on the planning, uh on the Rother Plan Committee is the fact that we don't have, or we don't have plans to meet the car targets that government are giving us for residential buildings. And that really makes us open to the most inappropriate, far more inappropriate, this uh developments. So I would ask you to bear that in mind, that this this is by no means the worst. And it's going to get even worse with the new government's uh plan reform and the planning regulations. So every time you turn down a potential dwelling, uh you have to look at the slightly wider picture and say this may be a reason why we've got to, you know, uh put hands up for even more inappropriate. So it's a consideration rather than specific to this particular development.
Yeah.
Uh, I I think we do have to be very careful because if we're not careful as a as a town council within a town, what's next? Build building planning applications in the beach house on the seafront? Because you could buy them for thirty thousand and put a two bedroom house there. You know, it's it's got to be realistic to what a residential area is. And having looked at those three, I just can't see any way there's enough actual land space, because you've got to take more land space than what the garages are to put something on. And then go out and block the light of everyone. It's just totally unacceptable. How that matches with the criteria you've got to fill in, I don't know.
If it is that unacceptable, it will be, uh it wouldn't be supported on appeal. So if we refused it, it went to appeal. But if it's, if the officers find that it meets the national standards, building regulations, density considerations, then it is likely that we've lose, that Rother would lose on appeal. Which costs money and also puts a black market at and yet another thirty not providing the right houses. So again, I'm saying that as a general consideration. I'm not overly familiar with this particular area. So I I will abstain on the actual building itself.
I think it's quite clear, Chair. I mean, it's been in several times already, been rejected. And there's very little change between this one and others. So I don't think we should worry about if it is right to say no, it's right to say no.
Yeah. So so on that basis, again, I shall propose that uh the committee objects to this application on the grounds of deficiency in social facilities if there is a second, please. Councillor Plin. Okay, all those in favour of objecting, please show. As you know. Um, so moving on to um item G. H. I. J. K. And then we'll move on to item seven, which is planning decisions by our district council. I assume we've all had a look at those. Is there any comments on any of those? No, okay. Yes, councillor Ben.
Uh, G, eighty two Dorset Road.
Yeah.
This was very controversial with, there was lease disputes and neighbourly disputes and all of that. I did advise the, for those of you not familiar with it, someone wants to build a very large summer house in their garden. They live in the upstairs flat of a of a large house divided into two flats. People are jacking the people downstairs. Funny enough, upstairs own the garden, downstairs don't. They were worried, uh first of all, they just didn't like the idea. But the only thing I felt they could possibly uh object to or the only the only way they could assuage some of their doubts and fears was to ask for a condition to be put on this summer house that even though it contains a toilet, it's never going to be used as a dwelling or an Airbnb. It is only as an amenity to the top flat. They did that at my suggestion. That has been accepted. So if any other councillors find a similar something similar going on in their own patch, that that is one thing you can you can uh you can guard against because people are very touchy about other people essentially turning a driveway into an Airbnb.
Okay, so moving on to item A is the neighbourhood plan to consider budget prediction, prediction for twenty five, twenty six. In this full year. So we need to consider the budget for the neighbourhood. Yes, we've got any updates on that or on the way forward?
As this is for you to decide if you want to ask the full council to set aside some money for you to spend on your next year ahead of planning the neighbourhood plan.
I think we should, um but as to how much that would be, I'm not too sure.
I think we did a thousand last time because you you might need to hire some rooms to some meetings. Um, you can get grant funding for your consultancy fees and stuff. So I think we did a nominal thousand, which you haven't spent, so we could do another thousand and add it to the pile maybe.
Yeah, I think that's pretty wise to do.
Chair, just just for clarification, is it this is money set aside if it's needed?
Yeah, yes, I believe that.
So it strikes me the status of neighbourhood plans might, the whole equation might change. So we're not spending it, we're putting it aside if we need it.
Yes.
Happy with that.
Okay, so we'll we'll stick with a thousand pounds for the next year. I've got a second for that.
Yeah.
Councillor Ben, all those in favour? Uh, item nine, motions from councillors, there were none. Item ten, committee actions to consider the response to the N P P F report.
I don't know whether I can ask this, Chair, because I'm only ex officio. But is there a plan from the planning committee as to what you plan to do with the neighbourhood plan from now?
You can't answer that question.
No, I don't think I understood.
Well, the the neighbourhood plan has been in Bexhill Town Council's remit since a year ago when the previous councillor, Richard Thomas, put it on first agenda and it was discussed and agreed. It hasn't gone anywhere. And Clark did some work to get some people involved in it, warmed up to join as from the residents. It's been moved into the planning and development committee to give the planning and development committee sort of a bit more substance, if you like, and something to really get. So as ex officio, all I'm saying is, what is the plan?
As far as I am aware, we agreed that myself and councillor Plin would sort of chair that advisory committee. Uh, and then August hit and all councils pretty much shut off. And then we come back and we're waiting, I believe, to hear from the relevant Rother officer. I don't know if we've heard.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Because of the local plan. So they came back and said the local plans have to take precedent. Um, so we're trying to keep those residents warm that were interested. And as soon as we can get that Rother officer in, you can have your meeting, get started.
I I'm intrigued because, Chair, that Ninfield had just done their consultation with the residents and their neighbourhood plan's been agreed by the residents. So an area very close to Bexhill has done theirs. So I'm very keen for it to.
I think you'll find that took them four years.
It did take four years and it was one person's work to create that for years. So there is a lot to do.
Yeah.
So that's all I was asking. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Um, I said, oh, to consider response to the N P P F report. Has anyone got anything to consider in that response?
I've got nothing to uh put on there because I don't think I'm fully qualified to reply to that report.
Well, I'm not saying anyone put their hands up, so I would just say that we don't have anything to consider, if that's all right with everybody.
I'm surprised you're not responding.
What would you like to say?
Well, I'm in a difficult position there. Um. As I alluded to before, the way the planning policy framework is going to work is, if anything, taking decisions away from district. I mean, Rother District Council Planning Committee, a citizen bank saying, why are we here if we're being told we've got to do this, this and this? And the same applies here. It, that is one way of looking at it. The government obviously don't agree with that and I think we will see how it, how this develops when the when the new N P P F is being implemented. We'll see what what the inspector does when they go to appeals. But I would commend you to look at it and think very carefully what uh what what difference it's going to make. Um, certainly we're considering that within Rother. Look. You need to be aware of the pressures that that's going to put on the planning, the whole planning system. And make sure that your your future deliberations take that into consideration.
Um, I shall just pass to the clerk.
Yeah, I just want to clarify what this agenda item is. I sent you all an email, all councillors, uh the beginning of September. This is to consider the response from the East Sussex and West Sussex Association of Local Councils on your behalf. As parish councils, so it's it's to consider the response they made.
They virtually said.
So I sent you an email which had uh um all the proposed reforms and what the um Association of Local Councils felt about that. And that's for you to consider, but you don't respond. Okay.
Okay, so then that, has anyone got anything else they'd like to add or?
No.
Okay, very good. Right, item eleven is correspondence. It was none. And twelve A, to note any answers to questions from the last meeting, there were none. Twelve B, to receive questions in the future agenda items. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, so the next meeting is the ninth of October, twenty four. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chair.